All right, folks, this will call us meeting order. Can you hear it? I'm gonna call this meeting order. I would, uh, y'all would, we'd ask Brother Tony Hughes. But Tony, I thank you for taking the time to do this. I know it's, uh, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal. So, you know, it's not a big deal to come and open something with word of prayer.
Yes, sir.
I know what time, it takes time out of your day, but I appreciate you coming to do that.
That's why we're...
Just a moment before we pray, somebody in the crowd thought they would get it over on this fella that they didn't think was a very good public prayer. And they called on him to ask the blessing. Well, it was dead silence for about forty-five seconds, and he said, "Amen." And they said, "What do you mean? We called on him to say the blessing." He said, "I wasn't talking to y'all." That was great. Father God, thank you that you were there for us to call on. And Father God, one of the great mistakes that we make as individuals and as people brought together with our common cause is that we forget that there's God with us. God, the third person of the Trinity, God, the Holy Spirit, is here to guide us, teach us exactly what is true and what is false. If we'll just follow, He will lead us into the most wonderful things we could ever imagine, and success will follow. If we never make a move because we fear that we will suffer, we're suffering already because of our fear. Let us embrace the future. Let us not dwell upon all the things that are wrong, but what with God leading us, we're gonna be able to do to make things right and good. Bless this body that is assembled here and these that have come to listen to this meeting. I pray God great progress would be made for our city and for the surrounding area, and that it will all meet with Your great plan. We pray this prayer in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen. May...
Thank you, sir. We, uh, today is flag day. Y'all know that? Just gonna let y'all know, so if you will, let's play the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm rolling, Mr. Mayor Val.
Yes, sir.
Don. What? Benny?
Present.
Right Dave?
Present.
I'm here. Thank y'all for coming. Y'all had a chance to look at your agenda for the day. So, I hear most of you approve this agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda of the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council.
I have a motion that we approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? If not, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of May twenty-four regular council meeting minutes. I have a vote, will, I have someone, like a motion that we approve these minutes.
Mayor, I make the motion to approve minutes of the regular council meeting of May twenty-four.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? If not, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You both? Okay, y'all looking at your invoices for approval. We've got, uh, emergency lag for cars, complete original lease cards involved, uh, in care technology, computer monitor software maintenance. That's fourth in City Hall. And then matter management, uh, for the hauls of trash and landfill, some landfill. Do I hear a motion to approve these, these bills be paid? I make a motion for it. Got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You both? Okay. All right, tonight we have a public hearing, uh, to consider some orders. Mr. Johnson, you wanna, you need to read over these? You don't need to...
Need to recess the meeting, Mayor.
Okay. All right, oh. Uh, I'll undertake a motion to recess the June fourteen city council meeting for the purpose of hearing testimony regarding four zoning requests. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to recess the meeting of the Clanton City Council for the purpose of a public hearing.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, this is, uh, Consider Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash one zero amendment to the zoning...
And we need to vote. We need to vote.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Video ready. Consider Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash ten.
Yeah, I think Jonathan's gonna read yours.
Uh, Mayor, this is just a, this is a public hearing order. It's Twenty Twenty-One dash ten, an amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning M one light industrial district to R dash one dash A. Single family residential district for property located at one thousand one seventh street south, Clayton, Alabama. The applicant is David and Don McCary. The name of the legal owner is also David and Don McCary. And Mr. Mayor, if we can have those speaking in favor of the orders, please come forward at this time.
Anybody speaking in favor of this, of the Don and Dave? Okay. Anyone here speak against? Okay. Move on to the next one?
Yes, sir. Uh, the next one is going to be to Consider Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash eleven, an amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning M dash R municipal reserve district to R dash G residential garden district for property located at County Road six through three, pin number nine five eight eight, Clayton, Alabama, three five oh four five. The applicant is F and P Land Development, and the name of the legal owner is also F and P Land Development. And if those speaking in favor of the rezoning, please come forward at this time.
Anybody here? Sir?
Correct and finish?
Yes, sir.
Speaking in favor?
You speaking in favor?
Not in favor.
Okay. All right, anybody here, uh, who's opposed it? All right.
Money is very hard to see. Uh, we own the property that's adjacent to Bountiful Place, which is the property that's adjacent to the seventeen acres that's up to be rezoned. I just wanna talk about numbers. The road that, uh, has access to this property is one point two miles long. Part of that road is in the city, part of that road is in the county. There's a five-way intersection at the end of that road at Highway thirty-one right now. The Bountiful Place has forty-two houses on ten acres. The crest, when it is built out, will have thirty-nine houses on thirty acres. If this is rezoned for garden homes, there can be as many as sixty homes on seventeen acres. That is a total of a hundred and forty-one houses on that road. If each one of those houses has two cars, that is two hundred and eighty-two more cars on that road than there are now. Uh, I'd like you to think about the city's infrastructure, and is this gonna be harmonious with the long-term plan?
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. Uh, the third, uh, point of business is going to be to Consider Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash twelve, an amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning R dash two, single family, two-family residential district to O dash one, office building district for property at five hundred Fifth Avenue North, pin number one one five one six, parcel number two, Clayton, Alabama, three five oh four five. And this is, uh, the applicant is the city of Clayton, and the name of the legal owner is also the city of Clayton. If those are speaking in favor, please, uh, come at this time.
Anyone other than us? Anybody who wanna say nothing against?
Yep. The fourth one is gonna be to Consider Orders Number Twenty Twenty-One dash thirteen, an amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning R dash two, single family, two-family residential district to O dash one, office building district for property at five oh two Fifth Avenue North, Clayton, Alabama, three five oh four five. The applicant is the city of Clayton, and the name of the legal owner is also the city of Clayton.
Okay, anybody here speak for it? Anyone against? Okay, that be enough of the discussion. I'll call the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting back to order. Okay. Y'all ready to get off here? I need to vote on this?
Yes, sir. Uh, well, uh, we're on item old business, the one is Twenty Twenty-One dash oh seven.
Right.
Yes, sir, we will need to vote on that. We have the first reading on May twenty-fourth.
Uh, number one, Consider Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash ten, amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning M one light industrial district to R one A, single family residential district, property located at one oh one, one oh oh one, seventh street south, Clayton, Alabama. David McCary. Do I hear a motion, would we like to approve this?
Uh, I think I've got a bit for orders.
For, uh...
Is that it?
You jumped ahead, I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Twenty Twenty-One dash zero seven, under old business number one, it relates to the, uh...
Duren Road.
Yeah.
I will... Sorry about that. Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash oh seven? An amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning M one light industrial district, B three, never looked at this district for property located at one hundred, I mean, one thousand Duren Road, Clayton, Alabama, after Marjorie McCoy. All right? Do I hear a motion, please? Approve this ordinance?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Orders Two Zero Two One dash zero seven to amend the, uh, zoning district boundaries.
All right, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Who's second? Dave?
Second.
All right, any discussion? If not...
This will be a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Minns?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
Councilmember AG?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
That is, uh, adopting this, Mr. Mayor.
Number two, Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash oh eight, Clarence Surplus Real Property, authorizing the transfer of the same to the Tropicana Airport Authority. Uh, first reading is on May twenty-fourth. Roll call, that's...
Need a motion and a second, yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Ordnance Twenty Twenty-One dash zero eight.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor Minns?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
Councilmember AG?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And that ordinance is adopting this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, under new business. Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six dash fourteen dash zero one, for consideration to authorize lease agreement for a Caterpillar three twenty-three excavator. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Two Zero Two One dash zero six dash one four dash zero one, and that is for consideration to authorize a lease agreement for a Caterpillar three twenty-three excavator.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number two, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six dash one four dash zero two, for consideration to authorize the purchase of Dakota multi-user restroom facility of C X T Incorporated. This will be going over in Olive Park. Do I hear a motion that we approve, uh, approve this for, uh, purchase of the Dakota multi-user bathroom? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, excuse me. I make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash oh six dash fourteen dash oh two.
Uh, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six dash one four dash zero three, for consideration to authorize the city of Clayton participation in the formation of the Cohibasolid Waste Disposal, Disposal Authority. Do I hear a motion that we pass it?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Two Zero Two One dash zero six dash one four dash zero three, authorize the city of Clayton's participation in the formation of the Cohibasolid Waste Disposal Authority.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All right, no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number four, Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six dash one four dash zero four, uh, for consideration to warrant, I hear Jeff Nims, the Cohibasolid Waste Disposal Authority. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I make the motion that we pass Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash oh six dash fourteen dash oh four.
All right, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
You opposed? Number five, Orders Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six, authorize the sale of alcoholic draft beer in city limits of Clayton, that's first read.
Uh, yeah, so if you'll recall, uh, this was a first reading a couple of weeks ago, but we hasn't updated dates in here, which requires a new first reading, so if you'll please bear with me. Ordnance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six, in ordinance to authorize the sale of alcoholic draft beer in the city limits of the city of Clayton, Alabama. Whereas the city council of the city of Clayton determined it served a public purpose to authorize the sale of alcohol within the Clayton city limits by the old ordinance number fifteen dash eighty-seven. And whereas the city council of the city of Clayton has determined it serves a public purpose to authorize the sale of alcoholic draft beer within the Clayton city limits. And whereas the Alabama state legislature approved local legislation authorizing the sale of alcoholic draft beer into the Clayton city limits. And whereas Alabama Governor Kate Ivey signed Act Number Twenty Twenty-One dash four five eight into law on Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, at one thirty-three P M. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, that the Clayton city council hereby amends section three dash two six of the city of Clayton Code of Ordnance Number Fifteen dash Eighty-Seven to save the following changes. Section dash, section three dash two six, alcoholic beverage means any alcoholic, spirituous, vinous, fermented, or other alcoholic beverage or combination of liquors and mixed liquor, a part of which is spirituous and vinous, fermented, or otherwise alcoholic, in all drinks or drinkable liquids, preparations, or mixtures intended for beverage purposes, which contain one half of one percent or more alcohol by volume, and shall include liquor beer, including draft beer, and wine, both fortified and table wine. Be it further ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, that draft beer, so with the exception of keg beer, shall be authorized under the same alcoholic license as regular beer for both on and off premise used. Be it further ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, that ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash zero six shall become effective at ten o'clock A M. on Sunday, August first, twenty twenty-one, whereas required by law.
Thank you, sir. Number six?
Yes, sir. Ordnance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash zero nine, in ordinance of the city of Clayton, providing that the code of ordinances, city of Clayton, Alabama, be amended by adding a section to be numbered Twenty Twenty-One dash zero nine, providing the following amendment to the zoning ordinance. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, as follows. Section one, amending the maximum height allowances for V one central business district from sixty-five feet or five stories to eighty feet or seven stories. Section two, amending the maximum height allowances for V two general business district from forty-five feet or three stories to eighty feet or seven stories. Section three, any ordinance or resolution in conflict herewith is repealed as of the effective date of this ordinance. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication or posting as required by law. Number five, section five, the section subsections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, and phrases of this ordinance are separable. If any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or par, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid by a valid judgment of the court of competent jurisdiction, such judgment shall not affect the validity of any other section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. The city council declares that it's intent it would not have enacted this ordinance with such invalid or unconstitutional provisions.
Number seven, Order Twenty Twenty-One dash one zero, an amendment to the zoning district boundaries changing the present zoning M one light industrial district to R one A, single family residential district for the property located at one oh oh one, seventh street south, Clayton, three five oh four five, with applicant David and Don McCary. Does spin through, we can go ahead and vote on this.
I need a, yes, sir, let me do a first reading, then we can do that, yes, sir.
All right, I hear a motion, would we approve this ordinance?
Oh, we should read it.
Read it, then we can go ahead and vote, yes, sir. Ordnance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash ten, first reading of the, is ordinance of the city of Clayton, providing that the code of ordinances, city of Clayton, Alabama, be amended by adding a section to be numbered Twenty Twenty-One dash ten, providing the following amendment to the zoning ordinance. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, as follows. Section one, the rezoning of property located at one thousand one seventh street south, Clayton, Alabama, three five oh four five, changing the present zoning M one light industrial district to R dash one dash A, single family residential district, property owner David Don McCary, applicant is David Don McCary, and the legal description is attached as exhibit A to this ordinance. Section two, any ordinance or resolution in conflict herewith is repealed as of the effective date of this ordinance. Section three, this one shall become effective upon its passage and publication or posting as required by law. Section four, the section subsections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, and phrases of this ordinance are separable. If any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid by a valid judgment of the court of competent jurisdiction, such judgment shall not affect the validity of any other section, subsection, paragraphs, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. The city council declares it is, it's intent it would not have enacted this ordinance with such invalid or unconstitutional provisions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the meeting rules to bring this matter for immediate consideration of the Clanton City Council.
Do I hear a motion? Second? Sir?
I need a roll call vote on this, Mr. Mayor, if you'll give me a yes or no vote, please. Uh, Mayor Minns?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Driver? Councilmember AG?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the rules have been suspended for immediate consideration. I'll win you now as a motion and a second, and another roll call vote to adopt this ordinance.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any orders go? All right?
Mayor Minns?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
Councilmember AG?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance Twenty Twenty-One dash ten is approved, you may now just leave our roll call vote.
The, uh... That's the last one we have.
Yes, we've got, uh, twenty first reading of Twenty Twenty-One dash eleven.
Twelve and thirteen.
If you, uh, if you'll bear with me, Twenty Twenty-One dash eleven, dash twelve, and dash thirteen are very similar, and they're the first reads, I mean, rezoning request for the public hearings to be held tonight. Uh, to save me from reading some of the, uh, especially section four, they're all the same, what I just read, so, uh, I'll just go through the first sections. Ordnance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash eleven, in ordinance of the city of Clayton, providing that the code of ordinances, city of Clayton, Alabama, be amended by adding a section to be numbered Twenty Twenty-One dash eleven, providing the following amendment to the zoning ordinance. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, as follows. Section one, the rezoning of property located at County Road six through three, pin number nine five eight eight, Clayton, Alabama, three five oh four five, changing the present zoning M R municipal reserve district to R G residential garden district. Advocate is F and P Land Development, property owner is F and P Land Development. The legal description is attached to this resol, uh, this ordinance as exhibit A. Ordnance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash twelve, in ordinance of the city of Clayton, Alabama, providing that the code of the ordinance, the city of Clayton, Alabama, be amended by adding a section to be numbered Twenty Twenty-One dash twelve, providing the following amendment to the zoning ordinance. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, as follows. Section one, the rezoning of property located at five hundred Fifth Avenue North, pin number one one five one six, parcel number two, Clayton, Alabama, three five four four five, changing the present zoning R two, single family, two-family residential district to O one, office building district. Property owner is city of Clayton, Alabama, and the applicant is city of Clayton, Alabama, as well. Legal description is attached as exhibit A to this ordinance. Ordnance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash thirteen, in ordinance of the city of Clayton, providing that the code of ordinances, city of Clayton, Alabama, be amended by adding a section to be numbered Twenty Twenty-One dash thirteen, providing the following amendment to the zoning ordinance. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, as follows. Section one, the rezoning of property located at five oh two Fifth Avenue North, Clayton, Alabama, three five oh four five, changing the present zoning R two, single family, two-family residential district to O one, office building district. Property owner and applicant is the city of Clayton, Alabama, and the legal description is attached to this ordinance as exhibit A. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to continue with number fourteen?
Sure.
First reading of ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-One dash fourteen, in ordinance to amend the time of municipal court proceedings in the city of Clayton, Alabama. Whereas the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, determined it served a public purpose to establish a time and place of the Clayton Municipal Court by adopting ordinance Number eight dash seventy-seven, section three, on November fourteenth, nineteen seventy-seven. And whereas the city council of the city of Clayton has determined it serves a public purpose to amend said ordinance in sections specified herein in the state the following. The municipal court of the city shall hold court proceedings at one o'clock P M. on the first, third, and fourth Tuesday of each month, and at such other times as may be deemed necessary by the city council with the advice and consent of the municipal judge. Which shall be held in a place determined by the city council with the advice and consent of the municipal judge. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, that the Clayton city council hereby amends ordinance eight dash seventy-seven, section three of the city of Clayton total ordinance is to reflect the language stated herein, amending the time and place of the municipal court proceedings in the city of Clayton, Alabama. Be it further ordained by the city council of the city of Clayton, Alabama, that this ordinance shall become effective upon its publication as required by law, and hereby directs the municipal judge to implement said time change as soon as practically possible.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to, against the suspended meeting rules, to bring this matter for immediate consideration of the city council.
Need a second?
A motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, have a roll call vote, uh, on that motion, yes or no, please? Mayor Minns?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
Councilmember AG?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, those, uh, rules for immediate consideration have been suspended. Just need a motion, second, and another roll call vote for adoption.
Uh, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Orders Number Two Zero Two One dash one four, in ordinance to amend the time of municipal court proceedings in the city of Clanton, Alabama.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Roll call?
Roll call vote, yes, sir. Mayor Minns?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
Councilmember AG?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And that has been adopting this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have any public comments, anybody? Kim, you wanna, uh, read the... The amount of the letter we got, I guess, from, uh...
Oh, yes, sir.
The Arts Council?
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Charlotte Roland, wrote us a very nice note, thank you note, uh, from the Arts Council to the city. Mayor Minns, City Council, thank you for your decision to allow the Arts Council to move to a new location. They now have a better opportunity to sponsor activities which promote their arts in Chilton County. This is an exciting time for us. Thank you for all that you do for the city of Clayton. Charlotte Roland. Uh, the Arts Council's moved over to the old Chamber office, and they've got a lot more room. I went to their opening the other day, it was very nice. Nice place to have here in Clayton.
Thank both of you for all your hard work there. You look great.
All right, um... Eric, you got nothing?
Yes, sir.
Dave? You? You got it, yeah?
Yes, sir.
All right, y'all love to meet you down, uh, we, we will meet again, put up this down. So, it is, uh, June the twenty-sixth. Uh, we're expecting a real big crowd that day, hoping the weather would cooperate with us. There gonna be a lot of things going on next week. There gonna be a lot of things going on next week. I look forward to seeing all y'all there. Uh, this is the first year we've had a, I guess, I won't say the name, the art, art space. This guy's got four number one hits. He's, he's done a real good job. And, and we look forward to hearing him. We're gonna look forward to the parades. Uh, all the festivals he's coming for, so I'd ask all y'all to try to come out and visit, have a good time with us that, that day. Uh, the next deal is the, uh, City, Clayton office, the city hall will be closed on July the fifth, uh, twenty twenty-one for, uh, optimization of every kind of state, so, uh, if there being nothing else? Do I hear a motion when you adjourn?
Make a motion when you adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, bye.
I think they have listed the draft beer change in the amendments, meaning you have Sunday, Sunday.